Well, good afternoon, ladies and gentlemen. It's Tuesday, November the 3rd, 2015. We're here at 601 at City Hall, 116th West Bridge Street, Granbury, Texas. And the Granbury City Council regular meeting is now called to order. I'd like to make one note that Councilman Laurel Perkel will not be present tonight, and also Councilperson Rose Myers is stuck in that dreaded Fort Worth traffic, so she'll be here any time now. So we're going to get started. We do have a quorum, so we'll get started with the agenda. I'd like to call upon our own J.C. Campbell to lead us in our invocation, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance and the Texas Pledge, led by Councilman Gary Couch. All rise, please.
Mr. Mayor and Council and City Manager, thank you for the opportunity. Let me take a minute. I want to remind everyone, not only the Council but the audience out here too, that next Wednesday, the 11th of November, we've got a Veterans Day program down at our conference center. And this is our way that we go about trying to honor the veterans that gave us the opportunity that we've got. So just want to remind everybody that your attendance is not required, but it sure would be appreciated to show up. Okay, with that, let us pray. Heavenly Father, thank you for this day. We thank you that waking up this morning and realizing that we are living in a country that is free was not of our doing, free to go any place in our country and not be restricted by rules that forbid it. We live in a country where we choose the leaders of our city, state, and country. Today, we are making decisions at the election polls that tell our elected officials what we want them to do. Thank you, Heavenly Father, for this being the case. There are others in this world that do not have the privilege of doing what we are doing as citizens of this great country. We ask that you be with this council tonight in their deliberations. May the decisions that are made here tonight be what is best for the citizens of Granbury. The members of this council were elected by the citizens to do what each council member considers best for our city. So we ask that you guide them in their deliberations when making these decisions. Heavenly Father, we ask that you watch over and protect our military, who is on guard tonight in different parts of this world. They allow us to have such meetings as the one we are in now, and we thank them for that. We ask that you bring them all home safely to their families and loved ones soon. Heavenly Father, we thank you for the rain that you have sent to us this past week. Help us to remember that you give us what we need, not what we want. All these things we ask in your name. Amen.
Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. And now the Texas flag. Under the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to thee, Texas, one state under God, one and indivisible.
Just a little housekeeping here before we get started. There's a note here I'd like to read here. The city is in the process of developing a new comprehensive plan, and we need a lot of public input. So on Tuesday, November 10th, at 6:00 PM, the city will host an interactive town hall meeting to get your feedback. And you can also complete an online survey via the city website at www.granbury.org. And I think the city managers and folks passed out these cards right here. But it's real important, and if you need some more cards, you give to people that you know in the community, that we get as much feedback as we can, because this is for the citizens. This is for the city, right here. And it's going to be a great task to take on, and we need all the input we can get for this. So if you take just a little bit of time and fill these cards out, we'd really appreciate that. Thank you. At this time, we're going to move into the citizen participation. For the folks that don't know what the citizen participation is, it's the city council provides an opportunity for citizens to represent, to present concerns or address issues that are not matters of consideration listed on the posted meeting agenda during the citizen participation period at one city council meeting per month, subject to the following rules. A person wishing to address the city council must first register with the city secretary and provide the following information: name, resident address, daytime telephone number, and the subject matter to be presented. Now, only one person may approach the microphone at that time, and only one person at the microphone, upon recognition by the presiding officer, will be allowed to speak for no more than three minutes, unless otherwise directed by the presiding officer. Speakers must address their comments to the presiding officer rather than individual city council members or the staff, and the speakers may file copies of their remarks or supporting information with the city secretary, who will make the information available to the city council and the city manager if requested. The council will be allowed to receive input or information for a future agenda item, but will not be allowed to enter into any discussion. The council shall allow approximately 30 minutes for the citizen's participation during the designated council meeting. And tonight, we have Teresa Anderson, which is with the DMO interim director. Welcome, Teresa.
Thank you very much. Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, councilmen and others. I am the interim director of the Visit Granbury, Inc., the new DMO. I have been on site for about 48 hours. So we've accomplished a lot in the 48 hours, but so much more to do. I wanted to just share with you a little bit about myself. I have over 25 years' experience in the DMO, or the CVB, or the destination marketing industry. I currently specialize in startup organizations, relaunches, and sometimes a rescue, because sometimes the situation is so bad that the organization is about to go out of business, so I like to go in and help them get back on track. We have a lot to do for your local DMO. We have a lot of foundation building to do, but you have a fabulous board of directors in total support of the work that needs to be done. We're going to develop policies, policy manuals. We're going to have programs developed. We are all focused on the transparency of the organization. We're going to build a strategic plan. Now, you may know that years passed. It was a five-year, 10-year, 20-year strategic plan. Things are a lot more fluid now, and the process of strategic planning has gotten a lot more condensed and streamlined. We're going to develop a three-year strategic plan. It will dovetail beautifully with a three-year agreement you have with the DMO. Of course, we'll come up with our vision and mission, but we're going to also develop very clear and specific goals based on the key function areas of a DMO. In addition to that, then we will develop some marketing strategies based on challenges we find with the destination, with the organization, whatever. We will be having at least one public session, where we'd like, we'll invite all of you, of course, but we'd like mostly our industry stakeholders to come. We want to get a really clear idea of what their challenges are, and so we can have one, a fully functioning and successful organization, but also a well-marketed destination. Within the whole strategic planning process, we plan to develop some really precise performance measures. We know that building a strong, effective program doesn't happen quickly, and all of this will not happen quickly, but it'll be done methodically, strategically, with the overall goal of having a strong, effective destination marketing organization and a very effective destination marketing initiative for all of Visit Granbury. Second to that, or not even second, because we've gone past the second things, we are going to develop a very strong recruitment program, because it's paramount that you have a really strong professional staff team. So we're going to be working on that soon and try to get your strong and fabulous staff team in place within the next maybe 90, 120 days. Thank you.
Thank you, Teresa. Next, council will move into the consent agenda. All these items on the consent agenda are the routine and previously discussed items, and they will be approved with one motion, and if any member of the council wants to pull some off or make changes to them, this is the time to do that. The first item is to consider approving the council meeting minutes of October 20th, 2015, regular meeting, and October 23rd, 2015, special meeting. The next consent agenda item is to consider approving a poll attachment agreement between Charter Communication LLC and the City of Granbury. This is an agreement that we have every year. There are some changes to the financial parts of it, which is mandated by the Federal Connection, but all in all, it's the same contract we've had. And also, number three is to consider approving the purchase of capital, technology, hardware, and services, and the related statement of work contract. And here again, this is, if you look at the packet, it was a bundled agreement with all that capital cost that was reviewed at the last budget, our last budget. So, council, you've had an opportunity to look at these consent agenda items. Are there any items on there you wish to pull off, or is there any changes to the consent If not, I'll entertain a motion to approve the consent agendas.
So moved.
I have a motion by Councilman Parsons, right?
Yes. Second.
I got a second by Councilman Allen. Is there any more discussion, council? Councilman Parsons, how do you vote?
Aye.
Councilman Allen?
Aye.
Councilman Couch?
Aye.
Oh, Ms. Myers is with us. Make the record.
Made it.
Councilperson Myers, how do you vote?
Aye.
That is passed. Our next item we'll go into is the deliberation agenda, the first item being a public hearing and consider adopting ordinance 15-45 approving a request of Michael Stores, Inc. to renew a Pacific use permit to allow the daily outdoor display of merchandise and the placement of cargo container for the storage of bulk merchandise. This property is located at 3906 East Highway 377, Section 114. As you know, council, this is the same S U P we do in the previous years, and it's under some new regulations now, and I'm going to let Scott Sobchek talk a little bit about that, if you would, please, Scott.
Thank you, Mayor, council, Mr. Manager. As the Mayor mentioned, this is a S U P that we've seen approximately 12 months ago, specifically regarding the cargo container. What's being requested is an S U P to allow for the outdoor display of merchandise under the front entryway of the Michael Store, as well as a cargo container on the backside, just behind the store, but not encroaching into the fire lane easement. The backside of the store is undeveloped at this time. It's the front of the store, basically where the occasional sales display would take place under the front entryway. And behind the store, you can see the cargo containers, tan in color, just located outside the fire lane easement. Site plan associated with the adoption ordinance, and per the zoning ordinance, you can see that both cargo containers and daily outdoor display in light commercial require an S U P. A little nuance here is that unlike the previous S U P that we saw for the Walmart that was being processed under grandfather status, less restrictive ordinances, this particular store is new. Since that time, we have adopted new standards for cargo containers. In essence, we are promoting that they invest into more brick-and-mortar type warehousing activity and not use these cargo containers, to the fact that one of the supplemental standards is that council is restricted to limit their approvals of these S U Ps on a one-year incremental basis only, unlike the one that we saw previously that we granted for three years. We've received no protest petition from adjoining property owners. This particular S U P comes with the same conditions applied to the S U P as we've seen for the prior S U P issued approximately 12 months ago. One is that the outdoor display of products for sale shall be presented with the following conditions: in essence, not block or impede pedestrian ingress or emergency ingress to the store, and that the cargo container shall be as submitted on the site plan. The length of the container shall not exceed 40 lineal feet. The color shall match the exterior color of the building store. You can see in the picture that it is. And the term of the placement of the container shall be for one year, after which the allowance of the placement shall become null and void. Your P and Z recommended approval as presented by the applicant.
Thank you, Scott. At this time, I open the public hearing. Is there anybody in the public that would like to speak or make a statement on this item?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and council. My name is Jason Lyman. I'm the store manager at the Michael Store. Just in addition to what he was saying, I'd like to say that the container's about half the size of what's allotted. About half the time, we have a few fixtures in there. It allows us to kind of operate more efficiently, makes it less cluttered in the back. This time of year, we're full of seasonal Christmas trees and whatnot, so it's very much appreciated, you know, for this to continue for us. As far as the temporary basis, I mean, I'd love for it to someday be out of it, maybe even in a bigger store, but the store's about two and a half years old, so it'll take a few more years, I think, just being a store exec, not a finance guy, but before we have the return to be able to open up a bigger one. Any questions for me?
Thank you. And council, are there any questions for, is it Michael or Jason?
I have one, Mayor.
Councilman Allen?
Do you keep it pretty well full during the whole season, year around?
This year, I actually practiced getting out of it, and for about three months, I had it empty, and the rest of the time, you know, probably three more months, I had product or fixtures in there that I didn't want to be out in the elements to keep them from getting rusty. And then this time of year, probably good three months, I have product in it.
Was it any reason you asked for just one year?
Can I ask for more?
Sir?
I'm pretty sure it's limited to one year.
It's limited from the term. But we can go up to three, can we? How do we do it with Walmarts? Sir? They were preexisting before the ordinance was adopted. Okay. Never mind. Thanks, sir.
You're teasing me.
I just, we do it every year, so that's why I didn't wonder when.
Yeah, and Walmart was preexisting, and grandfathered in here.
Yeah. So are your grandfather.
But we'd rather rebuild another store.
They would. Yeah, exactly.
Rad on.
Add on that store. Yes.
Move on down to Kroger's. They could move on down to Kroger's.
Uncle Big Store.
Big Store.
I'm just the store manager. I wish.
Any more question or concerns for Mr. Jason? Thank you, Jason. At this time, we'll close the public hearing. Counselor, is there any more concerns on this item? If not, I'll entertain a motion to adopt the ordinance 15-45 approving the request of Michael Stores, Inc. to renew the S U P to allow the daily outdoor display of the merchandise and the placement of the cargo container.
So moved.
I've got a motion by Councilperson Myers.
Second.
I have a second by Councilman Couch. Any more discussion, council? Councilman Allen, how do you vote?
Aye.
Councilperson Myers?
Aye.
Councilman Couch?
Aye.
Councilman Parsons? That ordinance is approved. Get it out here pretty soon. Our next item is a public hearing and consider adopting ordinance 15-46 approving a request of Christopher Hedges to renew an S U P to allow the continued operation of a tattoo parlor within the existing building addressed at 1368 East Highway 377. Here again, this is a renewed tattoo parlor, and also, it was, I think, received for three years, or they're looking for three years, and from what I understand, there's not been any issues, and it's been a pretty good business there. So Scott, you want to give us a little more information on that one, please?
That's correct, Mayor. This is a existing S U P that was issued for a trial period of one year approximately 12 months ago. It's been operating without incident. It's located in a light commercial zone per our zoning ordinance. Tattoo, parlor, body piercing studios require a S U P in light commercial. You can see the interior of the shop. You can see it's very well maintained, well kept. We have no reported incident of the operation of this particular business during its 12-month initial term. That was presented to P and Z, and P and Z recommended extending the term from one year to three years unanimously as a recommendation to the city council.
Thank you, Scott. At this time, I open the public hearing. Is there anybody in the public that would like to speak on this item? Not, I'll close the public hearing. Counselor, is there any discussion on this item? Not, I entertain a motion to consider adopting the ordinance 15-46 approving the request of Christopher Hedges to renew the Pacific use permit to allow the continued operation of a tattoo parlor within that building for an extension of three years.
So moved.
I have the motion by, was that Mr. Allen? Mr. Allen down there? Councilman Allen? Have a second?
Aye.
I have a second by Councilman Parsons. Counselor, is there any more discussion? Councilman Couch, how do you vote?
Aye.
Councilperson Myers?
Aye.
Councilman Parsons?
Aye.
Councilman Allen?
Aye.
That ordinance is approved. Our next item is a public hearing and consider adopting ordinance 15-47 approving a request of Charles Smith to rezone a 7.211 acre tract of the WR McQuarrie Survey abstract number 385 from interim holding to heavy commercial. This property is addressed as 315 East Clifton Road. Now, note, counsel, that this is a rezone only, no plat at this time. So Scott, you want to bring us up to date on that one, please?
Absolutely, Mayor. This particular piece of property is shown on the zoning map. It's bounded in a teal color, currently zoned interim holding, which is basically a placeholder upon annexation. The property is located just to the south of Grace Bible Church and to the west of FM4, right before you approach 377. What's being planned for the property is a combination office and warehouse facility. We have an attached site plan to accompany the rezoning request. It should be noted that both uses are allowed by right in the heavy commercial zone that's being applied for. No S U Ps required. But the one thing that we do want to do is tie the site plan with this particular adoption ordinance, because some concessions were offered up by the applicant, notably the elevations of the building, which you can see here's the office building, a pretty nice reveal approach as you go along Highway 4. These are the buildings that you'll see along the street frontage. And then during the deliberations at P and Z, some of the concerns from the adjoining property owners in the county to the west of the property had some, voiced some concern about the industrial look of the warehouse buildings on the backside of the building. So they came forward with, again, elevations showing the warehouse facility, again, combination of brick and masonry pillars on the building themselves, and then also to add in surrounding the warehouse facility. You can see bordered in brown with our standard screening fence, decorative screening fence. So that brown little area around the warehouse buildings will be our standard 25-foot stone column on center screening fence. So I think it's important, as the developer came forward with the site plan accommodations during the public deliberation, is to roll them into the adoption ordinance and provide the adjoining property owners and city council a comfort level that this is what they will develop. Again, the site plan. One other little nuance is our comprehensive plan, which is somewhat dated. It was last updated in 2008, shows this being bisected for commercial and high-density residential. So as a matter of procedure on these zoning cases, we like to actually get some feedback from P and Z and council on what changes have taken place since the adoption of the comp plan to warrant considering extending commercial in an area that was not earmarked for commercial. And in this particular case, the Planning and Zoning Commission liked what they saw on the site plan, liked the concessions being offered by the developer, and made a motion acknowledging that this particular property was bisected by commercial and what they saw on the site plan, they didn't mind extending the commercial considerations south to the extent of the southernmost property to accommodate the office warehouse use as proposed by the developer. So Planning and Zoning Commission recommended approval of the rezoning to heavy commercial with rolling in the site plan and elevations into the adoption ordinance, and in their motion for approval, as you can see on the bottom, the P and Z justified their reasoning on the fact that the comp plan showed a portion of the property earmarked for commercial use and didn't mind extending it to the south.
Thank you, Scott. At this time, we'll open up the public hearing. Is anybody in the public want to speak on this item?
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, council. Barry Gilbert with Procad Plus. We're doing the design development with Charles Smith on this, and I guess the only thing I have to add after what Scott said was there were some concerns about the operation of the storage being 24 hours, which we won't. It's only going to be open during normal business hours. Normally, they stay open till 8:00 or 9:00 o'clock at night, allowing people to get to the storage buildings after work, but it wouldn't be a 24-hour operation. And the other concern that we talked to some of the folks after we left P and Z was that any access off of Clifton Road not be developed, so to speak, that they wouldn't have any extra traffic coming down Clifton. The actual address of Clifton Road will be washed out during the plating process, probably because they're going to address it off of Highway 4. It wasn't there when that address was stuck on that property. So the concern that we would be accessing through Clifton Road to the property is not an issue unless the fire marshal or somebody wants us to have an alternate access to it back there in the back. There's only a couple hundred feet of Clifton Road that touches this backside of the property. So along with what Scott said, that's all I had to add, was that we had met the concerns of any of the people who made, got up and said anything at the P and Z meeting.
How would you control the storage parts of this, and probably even the warehouse of 24-hour, you know, and people, I know storage buildings, a lot of times people go in there all hours of the night?
It's gated. We have it gated with a privacy fence, the decorative privacy fence to surround the property in the back. The access would be off of Highway 4, and they simply wouldn't be able to, gate code wouldn't work after 8:00 or so.
Oh, I get you. So the customers would not even be able to get in there their-
Yeah, nobody gets to go in after certain hours. I'm not exactly sure what those hours are. I've had storage buildings before where they, typically after 8:00 or 9:00 o'clock at night, they don't want anybody in there. It's just kind of a concern for the police and such.
Counsel, any more questions for Mr. Gilbert?
Thank you, Barry. Thank you.
At this time, we'll close the public hearing. Counselor, is there any more concern or questions on this item? If not, as you noted, we'll entertain a motion to consider adopting ordinance 15-47 approving the request of Charles Smith to rezone the 7.211 acre tract of the Quarrie Survey abstract from interim holding to heavy commercial with the said, the applicant has agreed to construct the screening fence along the entire back of the property line and the southern portion of the rear property lines backs up the residual use and is out of the city. So with the said construction screening fence.
Mayor, why did he agree upon that? Was that something the city had requested, or some neighbor?
Scott, you want to answer that?
Absolutely. There were some concerns from the adjoining property owners to the west about light bleed over and activity, and the other is the aesthetic appeal from the roll-up doors, that it would have an industrial look. So the applicant agreed to put the decorative fence to actually help mitigate that. The other good nuance about this particular property is there's an electrical easement. So you can see where the screening fence is. It's fairly wide between the landscape buffer, you can see the 20-foot landscape buffer, and where the fence is located, that's actually a transmission line. So it's got an extra wide buffer in addition to the fence. So there's heightened protection there from the adjoining property owners from, you know, headlight sweeps and the aesthetic appeal of the roll-up doors. So they seem to address all the concerns at P and Z, and P and Z unanimously approved it with the condition that those site plan accommodations, the elevations and the site plan be tied to the adoption ordinance.
Right. Thank you.
Any more concern, council? Questions?
Mayor, make a motion to approve as presented.
I have a motion from Councilman Couch to approve as noted.
Second.
I have a second by Councilman Allen. Is there any more discussion, council? Councilperson Myers, how do you vote?
Aye.
Councilperson Parsons?
Aye.
Councilman Allen?
Aye.
Councilman Couch?
Aye.
That ordinance is approved. The next item, council, it's a two-part, with the first part having two parts to it also, and I'm going to read all of them first, and then we will break it down and vote on each one individually. each one individually. The first one is a public hearing and consider approving the request of Jasper Development LTD to, A, voluntarily annex 1.684 acres of the tract of the Joshua Minnete survey abstract number 351 into the city's corporate boundaries with, number one, consider accepting the said petition, and number two, consider adopting ordinance 15-48 providing for the voluntary annex of the said property. And B to number seven is to consider adopting ordinance 15-49 regarding the rezoning of a 14.354 acre tract of the Joshua Minnete survey abstract number 351 and the Benjamin Green survey abstract number 197 to amend the existing plan development from plan development single-family to plan development single-family and MD-1, which is duplexes as depicted on the proposed zoning map. The property is located on Old Granberry Road north of the existing Gemstone Estates subdivision. Scott, you want to break this one down for us a little bit?
Absolutely, Mayor. As mentioned, we have two parts to this, the first of which is a voluntary annexation request. This is the general layout of Gemstone Estates development. You can see the first phases, 1, 2, 3, and 4 are already in place on the PD area. The plan development for Gemstone is colored in purple. The remaining balance of that just to the east is the residual portion, phases 5 and 6, remaining to be developed. We'll see that later on a preliminary plat, amended preliminary plat. That little notch basically is currently outside the city, and the property owner for Gemstone acquired that not too, some time ago, and wants to fold that particular property into Gemstone in order to make it a little more contiguous and also bring that into the amended preliminary plat as well. Under this particular agenda item, there's a provision in Chapter 43 of the local government code that allows cities to annex what's called sparsely populated property without any kind of dual reading, public hearing process dual reading and cooling period before the adoption ordinance. But it has to be based on a petition by the property owner. So that's why you see the strange language under Section A1 and 2. There's a procedural aspect to cities bringing in voluntarily annexed property that fit this sparsely populated definition. That is, if the city chooses to bring this property in, we need to have in the minutes that you've considered, you accept the petition, and then you're adopting the ordinance. And we'll, we have a screen for that motion later. Secondly is the rezoning. Now that the property is in the city, we can actually fold that into the PD in and of itself. You can see the aerial photography enveloping the, hopefully newly annexed area into the property. The rezoning itself as part of the PD, the plan development, the plan development was developed in around 2000, 2001. And interestingly enough, its categories predate our current zoning ordinance that was adopted in November 2001. So its base district is a district called Single Family 4, which we no longer have on the books. Something that we have more alike to it as Single Family Residential R7. So these are smaller lots. It was a very, at the time, a very robust plan development. These are the design standards that were rolled into the plan development way back in 2000. You can see the minimum lot area of note is roughly 5,000 square feet for single-family It gives minimum lot depth and width. I can tell you, let's see, get to the phasing of this. The, there's actually two, oh, there we go. The phases of these subsequent developments are broken into phases 5 and 6. Phase 6 will be single-family residential, and you can see in the geometric layout here that the overall average of the single-family lots in phase 6 are somewhat larger than phases 1, 2, 3, and 4. So they're, they're not your typical 5,000 square foot lots on the average. They're about 6,000, maybe a little higher in some of the cul-de-sac areas where they have more of a pie shape. Phase 5 is proposed as MD-1. So this is now turning over from a single-family residential PD to a mixed-use plan development. For phases 5 will be duplex, in essence. So for every one of those lots, there'll be two units proposed. We did get some on the rezoning, we did get some adjoining property owners that backed up to the MD-1, proposed MD-1, and you could see them, they would front Topaz Lane. See if I can get to the map here. For whatever reason, it cuts out on me. But the protest compromise, there we go, comprises roughly a little over 7%. Those areas that are denoted in red on your map are those that have filed protest petition with the community development department. As such, 7% does not prompt a supermajority vote by council that would require 20%. Mayor, I'll be happy to, oh, one other thing I do want to remark on the rezoning request. Our comp plan earmarks this for low-density residential, and MD-1 is in our comp plan considered high-density residential. So again, as with a previous zoning case, we need to make a statement for the record in the minutes regarding what changes have taken place since the adoption of the comprehensive plan in 2008. And P&amp;Z's review and assessment of this particular case, they noted that just to the, just to the west of the subject property is a gas well. So they thought that the transition from single-family residential, there we go, single-family residential through the MD-1 to the gas well located immediately to the east, west, was a step-down or tier-down effect in land use classifications that they were comfortable with. So in their motion on the rezoning, they made that notation.
Were they, were they wanting to put a buffering? Is that what you're saying, of some type of buffering between there?
They just acknowledged that the transition from Topaz through the single-family residential in between the MD-1, and then if you actually look, the gas well is some distance away, but it's still an operating gas well, that that was a good enough transition to warrant justifying approving the change in the comprehensive plan assessment and the fact that it's been dated, 2008, so the comp plan is roughly about seven years old now. And since that time, the gas well has appeared. So they felt comfortable in their motion. The P&amp;Z vote was a vote of four A's and two Nays. And I can tell you, the four A's recorded their motion supporting the plan, justifying it based on the gas well proximity. The two Nays basically have talked to members in the community, Gemstone community, and I think their concern, at least their voiced concern in the minutes, were that the purchasers believed that this was going to be solely a single-family residential neighborhood community, and they, through the residents, they couldn't support changing it to MD-1. But it did pass, and it's coming to you with a report of approval.
And Scott, I'm going to go ahead and read number eight here, which I meant to do that so we can go ahead because it kind of ties up with it, the public hearing to consider approving also the request of Jasper Development LTD to preliminary plat, the 14.354 acre tract of the Joshua Minnete survey abstract number 351, and the Benjamin Green survey abstract number 197 has lots 8 through 28, Block 1, lots 20 through 39, Block 4, and lots 1 through 20, Block 15, of the Gemstone Estates subdivision, phase 5 and 6. Also, this property is the Old Granberry Road north of existing Gemstone Estates subdivision. So we can go ahead and discuss that also, if you would.
Mayor, this particular preliminary plat is, just does that, it's an amendment to the preliminary plat to bring in the acreage of the newly annexed area and actually changes that little piece that was located over to the north northeast from single-family residential and bring in phase 5 as MD-1, and changes the subsequent layout of phase 5. It only has access onto Old Granberry Road. We have as a part of this preliminary plat, a few variances, the first of which is a variance to 35E to allow for double frontage lots. Those would be the lots along Old Granberry Road. There's a note on the plat that prohibits access from those lots onto Old Granberry Road. They will actually access by condition Amethyst Court, the internal street. There's a variance to Section 31L regarding the continuation of street names. That would apply to Jaccenteth Lane. If you look, that's the internal street on phase 6. That actually extends all the way through the development. And if you go across the street, across from Topaz, there's an existing Diamond Court, just a little cul-de-sac stub court. So rather than have the continuation of Jaccenteth, it just basically applies to Jaccenteth terminating at Topaz. And the 911 operator is fine with that. She's well, she's well aware of it. It was party two DRC comments and supported it. We have a variance to 31G to allow for the street alignment. This applies to the Opal Court, which is part of the MD-1 development. Get to the map here. Just across of Old Granberry Road, there's a cross street. There it goes. Wishbone Court. But we have an offset, in essence, that it has to be, the offset has to be wider than 125 feet. Our fire inspector and our city engineers looked at the variance, and you have a memorandum of support from our city engineers saying that there is, there's really no traffic concern. The volume of traffic coming out of Opal Court is minimal. There's no through traffic. It's a cul-de-sac street, so it's not a high-volume street dumping onto Old Granberry Road. We have a variance to 36A4 to not provide sidewalks, and this only applies to Old Granberry Road. The developer will provide sidewalks internal to development, fronting all residential lots. We have a variance to 31 to not improve Old Granberry Road to an urban facility. We do have our required dedication in lieu of improvement, and it's consistent with the remaining balance of Gemstone Estates all along Old Granberry Road. So he's basically dedicating to the public, I believe approximately 20 feet or a little over 20 feet. And then finally, we have a variance to 39 and 46 to not provide water and sewer along the frontage of lots 17 through 20. And this is a good shot of the utility map, so you can see that only applies to that stretch of Old Granberry Road between Opal Court and Amethyst. Our subdivision ordinance promotes a 2 and 3 requirement to provide stubs to the further extent. So when the developer, in this case to the northeast develops, they could just tie onto both water and sewer. So again, you have a memorandum from our engineer acknowledging those stub tie-ons to the adjoining property. There's also stubs for alongside service to the property to the, to the north side of Old Granberry Road at various locations along Gemstone Estates. And that's it on the plat, Mayor. P&amp;Z recommends approval of the amended preliminary plat and the variances as presented by the applicant and as recognized in your memorandum from the city engineer. I will get to, see if I can, get to the, here we go. Votes regarding the voluntary annexation zoning and plat amendment.
Thank you, Scott. There's a lot there to absorb, but basically they're taking that small piece and combining it with the other one and rezoning it to where they can build the multiple, the duplexes with the single-family homes and keeping the said variances there with that also. I'm going to open the public hearing right now for item number 7 and 8. Is there anybody in the public that would like to speak on either one of these items at this time?
Mayor and members of the council, my name is Carl Greer. I'm the owner of Jasper Development. I'm the developer of Gemstone. He did a great presentation. I don't have anything to add, but I wanted to make myself available in case you had a question.
Thank you, Carl. Counselor, are there any questions for Carl or any concerns at this time, or Scott even?
Uh, Mr. Mayor, how many duplex lots are there?
20 total.
20 total?
Yes, sir.
And are those all on, what was that, Amherst Lane or Amethyst?
Yes, sir, and Opal, which is a little cul-de-sac that has six lots on it. What I tried to do, you know, that's a pretty good map there.
It'll be Amherst Court, and where's the other six?
It runs parallel to Old Granberry. There's a dark dashed line running there. That's the separation between the single-family and the MD-1.
The hash line that's the double L-shaped?
Yes, sir.
So everything in phase 5, everything in phase 5 is multifamily?
Yes, sir. There's one, two.
That's all?
There's roughly five lots that abut the duplex.
So in essence, this is the multifamily or the, excuse me, the duplexes are separated from the rest of Gemstone because they face a single road that has no access into Gemstone?
Yes, sir.
Is that correct?
Yes, sir.
And then all of this will be annexed into the city once you get this issue settled?
Yeah, there was a, there was a little tract there. It was 1.6 acres that I tried as hard as I could to purchase long ago when I was assembling everything. And the gentleman wouldn't sell it to us, and years later, got getting into all that lawsuit against the city and me. And to settle that for the city, I just went in and purchased it from him, not at a good value, mind you. And so I met with Scott, trying to figure out what we'd do with it because, you know, I'd already designed all my streets around it, and nothing was flowing through it, and here's this little, and it's not even a rectangle. And so with the help of the staff and everything, that's, that's kind of how he, the annexed it into the city because I wanted to get it part of what we've done in the past. And then in the in-between time also, to the east of us, which is county land, there ended up being a gas well. He's, he's put his storage, water storage area right on my property line. Nothing we can do about it, nothing the city can do about it. And so I just thought that'd be a better transition.
And then Jaccent will be extended through the one cul-de-sac, and it'll, then it'll go all the way back around and tie into?
Yes, sir. It comes right back into our main road, Topaz, coming in from Old Granberry. And basically what we tried to do is those lots are a little bit bigger than we've done in the first four phases, but that'll tie back in and keep it separated from that other and go right along with what I've done in the, because I think we've got 188 houses so far that we've done. And there's 41 lots that are residential.
Forty?
That would be phase 6.
There'll be 41 lots in there when you bust that road through there and tie back into those cul-de-sac?
Yes, sir.
Okay. All right. I have no more questions. Thank you.
As a, as a side comment, we worked with Carl to try to get him to bring it in the city because in the county, there's no land use controls out there. So anybody could acquire that property and build pretty much anything, you know, welding shop or put it on a home, yeah, whatever use that probably wouldn't have been consistent with the adjoining Gemstone development. So it was in his interest as well as the city's actually to bring it in through an annexation process.
I have a question, Mayor.
Councilman Allen?
You said there's going to be no exit, goes back to Old Granberry Road out of this subdivision?
Not in the residential, just for the MD-1.
Okay.
That one street.
In reading this, and there was a lot of reading on both, both of them, but it said y'all would do no repair on Old Granberry Road. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Do we need a turn lane there or anything?
In the, in the past, when I did phase 1, in conjunction with the city, I actually built a deceleration lane. And unfortunately, about two weeks after we opened the subdivision, the county decided that they didn't want that. That created quite an obstacle. And so basically, long and the short, we went back out and closed it down. And so, basically, long and the short, we went back out and closed it down, repainted the road, and it's never been used. And so, we had asked to the-
Was it in the city limits, Carl, when they did that?
Yes, sir. But they evidently have authority to do that. I may be speaking out of turn. I don't know. Well, I know we lost the battle and the city was on my side.
Was that in the city limits, Scott?
It was, yes.
How did we, I don't understand how we lost?
I didn't either.
I can tell you, we posed the question to our engineer on whether or not there was any need for a deceleration lane on Opal Court, which is the relevance of this particular amending plat, and our engineer did not suggest it, based on the small amount of lots and the number of trips.
And what we're doing now, right?
Yes, sir.
Yeah, yeah, I agree.
The original one, because it is the main street into Gemstone, and when I first started that, because I designed the car dealerships as well, we ran water all the way down 377 and we were looping utilities and so on. And so, I felt like it made sense because that would be the main street running through there. On this one, it's generating almost no traffic with just the cul-de-sac.
All right. The next question is, you're asking for no sidewalks, right?
No, in my subdivision, I will have sidewalks. Just along Old Granberry is where I won't have the sidewalks. They keep an open bar ditch.
Yep.
Everything in Gemstone, even though when I developed Gemstone, I also have Josiah Estates, which is a gated community, a different housing set. But everything in Gemstone, even though they're mostly like 140s to 160s, everything in Gemstone, I have underground utilities, electric water, sewer, curb and gutter. I have nothing above ground. But on the Old Granberry side, I cannot control that and that's an open bar ditch county.
No, and Carl, I apologize. It's my fault because when I was reading this and I was looking at 2001, 2005, it talks about Sepifilis, you know, which we know there's none out there.
Right.
So, that's where I was getting confused.
Oh.
You're not asking for none of that?
No.
No?
Okay. We'll have all sidewalks inside, both the MD1 and the residential, the phase 6.
Okay.
What I do is, instead of building it when I build the streets, because I've found that basically the concrete trucks come in to pour the slabs and everything, they bust up the sidewalks. And so, it's a requirement that I make the builder do and they build the sidewalk when they're doing their driveways and everything. But Gemstone has internal sidewalks throughout the entire estates.
All right. Thank you, Carl.
Certainly.
Thank you for the sidewalks.
Well, I like to do underground utilities. It ends up running a little bit of cost up, but I just think it looks better. And so, everything I've ever built in Granberry is fully underground.
Well, both those two developments are very nice, so I appreciate your attention to the detail.
Well, thank you. I really do appreciate that. I sometimes wonder if anybody notices, but I'm a real detail freak. And I'll say compliments to your staff. You know, I've been working with them for years now and just, they're great. We work in numerous cities and I'm just telling you, you've got-
You're talking about our staff?
Yes, sir.
Wait a minute, his button just flew off over there.
Counselor, any more questions for Mr. Greer or Scott? At this time, I'll close the public hearing on both those items. Trying to sort through this thing. Chris, did you want to add anything to this? I know you've been twitching here a little bit.
No, I'm good.
You okay with that? Okay. Chris got educated on this also. Okay, counsel, at this time, I'm gonna break this down then. We're gonna go ahead with number 7 and I'm gonna entertain a motion to, first of all, to accept the voluntary annex of the 1.684 acres of the tract of Joshua Minnet survey abstract number 351 into the city corporate boundaries and consider accepting the said petition and also consider adopting the ordinance 15-48 providing for the voluntary annexation for the said property.
So moved.
I have a motion by Councilperson Myers.
Second.
I have a second by Councilman Couch. Is there any more discussion on the voluntary annexation? Councilman Parsons, how do you vote?
Aye.
Councilman Allen?
Aye.
Councilman Couch?
Aye.
Councilperson Myers?
Aye.
Annexation is approved. The next item, item number B, will entertain a motion to consider adopting ordinance 15-49 regarding the rezoning of the 14.354 acre tract of the Joshua Minnet survey abstract number 351 and the Benjamin Green survey abstract number 197 to amend the existing planned development from the planned development single-family to the planned development single-family and MD-1 as reflected on the proposed zoning map. I have a motion on that one.
So moved.
I have a motion by Councilman Allen.
Aye.
I have a second by Councilman Parsons. Counselor, any more discussion on the adopting of that ordinance? Councilman Parsons, how do you vote?
Aye.
Councilman Allen?
Aye.
Councilman Couch?
Aye.
Councilperson Myers?
Aye.
Ordinance number 15-49 is approved. Did we cover everything we needed in that, Scott?
Item number 8, I didn't know item number 8.
Yeah, we're doing number 8 now.
The annexation and the zoning, it was great.
Okay. Sure we don't leave anything out of all that. So, next of all, we're gonna do the item number 8 here, the public hearing concerning the approval of the request of Jasper Development LTD to the preliminary plat. So, do I have a motion to?
So moved.
I have a motion by Councilman Parsons.
Second.
I have a second by Councilman Allen. We might enter into that motion with the said variances also, so we make sure that we collect those also. Are you okay with that?
Yes.
Yeah, fine. It's the variance, sure.
So, we have a motion and a second on the plat. Any more discussion, counsel? Councilman Parsons, how do you vote?
Aye.
Councilman Allen?
Aye.
Councilman Couch?
Aye.
Councilperson Myers?
Aye.
That request is approved. Our next item is to consider approving a request of the ranches of De Cordova LP to execute a public improvement agreement by and between the ranches at De Cordova LP, Acton Municipal Utility District and the City of Granberry, Texas for the installation of a public water and sanitary sewer facility for the future phase 2 of the De Cordova Ranch development. The estimated construction cost of those improvements totaled approximately $190,725. Scott, you wanna talk a little bit about that one, please?
Certainly, Mayor. This particular development is in its second subsequent phase. The developer is Mr. Phil Hope. He's in attendance tonight. The purpose of this public improvement agreement is to get an early jump start on the construction of the water and sewer to support the second phase. You can see the second phase basically delineated on this particular map. It's in orange, bright orange. So, what we have is just water and sewer only. We have roughly about 2,500 lineal feet of 8-inch water line and about 2,300 lineal feet of combined 8-inch gravity flow sewer and low-pressure pipe. This particular development is located within AMUD CCN. That's why you see the public improvement agreement, it's a little bit unusual, as a three-party contract. We usually see these as two-party contracts between the city and the developer. AMUD has signed this contract. It's basically being dedicated to them. However, since they're in our ETJ, they adhere to our design standards for the placement of water and sewer sized lines, locations of fire hydrant and whatnot. So, they were party to the DRC review process. They have signed, they've reviewed the engineering plans, have signed the contract. Our engineers sign them. Both AMUD and our Public Works Inspection Department will go out and inspect the infrastructure that's being proposed. And once it's being installed and accepted, we should see final plat application follow suit a few months down the line. City staff recommend approval of, or city staff recommends executing the PIA as presented to the council.
Counselor, any questions for?
So, are the other phases of this development in city limits or not?
They're not.
They're not?
They're not.
And you're saying this one is going to be developed and then voluntary annex after that?
No, it will not. It's actually in AMUD's jurisdiction.
So, basically, we're just a conduit for this to move through for an AMUD application, correct?
That's correct.
Okay.
It could be annexed.
Aye.
It could be annexed as later date.
Is general we don't annex residences?
Well, my question was, if we're gonna do the, or they're gonna pay for it, but they're not gonna buy water from us? Or they're gonna buy from AMUD?
They're gonna buy it from AMUD.
They're in AMUD's CCN.
The driving force behind this, and you can see on the map, is our ETJ strike is that red boundary. So, in our ETJ, they adhere to our design standards for subdivisions, water, sewer, streets, drainage. And that's what they're doing in essence by our being party to this contract, is they're adhering to our heightened design standards for infrastructure. So, if this was just in AMUD's district, they would probably have a lot lesser standards, like a 6-inch water line, for example, and further fire hydrant spacing. You would typically see county standards in a utility district. So...
Counselor, any more questions for Scott? If not, counsel, entertain a motion for the approval of the PIS submitted by the applicant.
So moved.
I've got a motion by Councilman Couch?
Second.
I have a second by Councilperson Meyer. Is there any more discussion, counsel? Councilman Allen, how do you vote?
Aye.
Councilperson Myers? Councilman Parsons?
Aye.
Councilman Couch?
Aye.
That is approved. Our next item is to consider adopting resolution 15-29 related to requesting financial assistance from the Texas Water Development Board and authorizing the filing of an application for financial assistance. And I'm gonna call upon our own Ava Gregory to talk on this a little bit, if you would, please.
Thank you, Mayor, Council, City Manager. I just wanted to give you a little background, but this has been many months of combined effort of several departments, the Public Work Department, the Meter Reading Department, to analyze and study our water meters and have several meetings with outside companies to be able to come together and recommend the best solution for our meters. As you know, we have 5,000, about 5,500 meters and many of them, thousands of the meters are over 10 years old with diminished accuracy. And we were able to determine that what we'd like to recommend is to move forward with an advanced metering infrastructure, that is, advanced system that provides two-way communication before, between the smart meters and utilities. We would be able to provide increased accuracy of the water being sold. Through the leak detection program, we would be able to see savings in water and energy. And we would also be able to provide enhanced customer service because we would have access to real-time data and able to provide that information to our customers. At this time, the first step is, or several of the steps, is to be able to access some financial assistance. And through the Texas Water Development Board, we were able to determine that they have available low-interest funding. And we would be accessing the same funding that we have done for the water treatment plant, the drinking water state revolving fund. And at this time, we asking you to approve our resolution related to requesting financial assistance and also to be able to file the application. Once that is done, our engineer, Keith Kendall, prepares the application and will be filed with the Texas Water Development Board. The resolution states the most we would be applying for is $3 million. That was recommended by the Texas Water Development Board. The exact amount of the project hasn't been determined and we are looking at less than that, but we will be able to adjust that as we are able to determine what the true cost will be.
And what was that interest rate?
That total amount is $3 million that we are applying for on the resolution.
You talked about a really low interest rate?
Oh, yeah, the interest rate, yes. We have reached that to the Texas Water Development Board and the interest rate that currently have would be 0.9% for 10 years. At this time, we are looking at closing late March and early, or early April.
Very good. Counselors, are there any questions or concerns for Ms. Gregory?
I've got a bunch.
How many?
Much.
Okay.
I got breaking news too, by the way, Mayor, on election, if you wanna hear it.
Councilman Allen, no.
You don't wanna hear it, okay. I'm winning.
Councilman Allen.
Ava, this is the one that we did a test on, wasn't it? The meters? And I don't remember us looking at the results of that, but was it a lot of savings or?
We have had some conversation with one of the companies who have done the testing for us. They have tested 50 meters and they have tested the low flow, the mid flow and the high flow on all of the meters. And they were able to determine that the accuracy of these meters were diminished. At the low flow, they were finding 92 to 93% accuracy. On the mid flow, it was 94, 95, and the high flow, I believe, was around 96. Based on that, they have done some preliminary calculation for us and determined that there isn't, you have your total revenues that we collect based on water and sewer, but what is impactable revenue is the revenue after you deduct your minimum charges. So, based on about $5 million, we are projecting to recover about 5% of that. And also, through the leak detection, we would be projecting to recover about 2%. So, all in all, what we are seeing, that if we would finance the project for 10 years, it would pay for itself.
And what's the warranty on them?
The meters are warranted, the 3/4 inch meters and the 1-inch meters are warranted for 20 years.
And it's gonna take 10 years to get our money back. Ava, what happens, a lot of our customers today are saying, you know, our water bill is way too high, way too high. I went up, my bill in the summertime ran over $500 in my home. What do you do if you got a meter that's bad at anybody's house and they've been paying 500 a month? And all of a sudden, you go out and say, well, it could've been 650. We got a new meter. How are they gonna accept that?
I would say to that, that I believe every customer would like to pay and want to pay exactly the consumption what they are using. So, they don't wanna pay more, they don't, maybe they would wanna pay less, but the fair would be that everybody pays for the consumption that they are using. If we have a system in place that we are able to detect that leaks much sooner, if there is an issue with a customer's account, that there is a leak and we are unable to determine it now until we read months later, there is a high consumption, then we call a customer, we would be able to see that in real time, the day maybe that it happens because we are able to monitor the system. So, we would be able to call them possibly 30, 20 days prior to, that we are able to call them now. So, I would rather say that they would be able to see savings.